Okay, let's stand and place the flag. You signed your pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our government, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Kevin is not going to be here tonight, Kevin Burkholder. So we will be a person short. I'll call the meeting to order. Take a look at the agenda if you haven't already. Anyone have any objections to the agenda as it's set out? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Same, opposed, same sign, ayes have it, unanimous. All right, with regard to the consent agenda, we have minutes from the revenue neutral hearing last meeting, and minutes from the budget hearing, and minutes from the regular meeting. Anyone have any questions or concerns with regard to those? If not, can I have a motion to approve the three sets of minutes?
I move we approve the three sets of minutes.
I'll second that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it unanimously. Warrants and payroll and financial report. Anyone have any questions about anything in any of those? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it unanimously. With regard to public comments on matters included in this meeting's agenda, the release and settlement agreement that you see there listed at number six relates to the discussion we had last meeting with city attorney about resolving the lawsuit on the property out in the industrial park whereby the parties would return, or the city would return the party's money and the parties would return a clear deed. The other matter with regard to the ordinance, it's just the uniform offense ordinance and uniform traffic ordinance, these are published and adopted by cities all over the state. Those are, that is on tonight, I would expect, will probably take action, so family would talk about those uniform ordinances, they're free to do so. So, does anyone wish to say anything?
We're talking about property east of Long Bear and north of Airstream property that would be developed at some point.
Yeah, it's right across. Mike, because we're putting these out livestream, generally I ask that people come over here, but the question's pretty simple, so I'll answer it. Yeah, it's right across north of where it used to be the Airstream guy or whatever. Yeah. It's got stuff sitting out there on it now.
It's become both isolated.
Yes, it has. And now it's ours, our isolated, or will be tonight, after tonight. Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll go on and go to you, Mark, to talk about the release and settlement.
Well, as you mentioned, last week the city attorney provided, that day, a report on this. The city bought a resold lot, six block one, the bad edition, in December of 21 to the end of 2016. Both parties have agreed for the city to purchase it back for the same price, for the reasons you, reasons you mentioned.
What we need to do tonight, if the council's of a mind to, is simply approve or authorize me to sign the settlement agreement. Any thoughts or discussions on any of that? Nothing?
We covered it all beforehand.
Yeah, we have talked about it before. Well, I'll make the motion then, that, well, that's probably a little awkward, somebody ought to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve the release and settlement agreement.
Tim, you want to second?
I will second that.
Motion in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, ayes have it unanimously. And, do you have that, Mark, or Janet?
I do.
Okay, don't let me get out of here without signing it. Because I think they're waiting on that. With regard to the uniform ordinances, you don't have anybody down, Mark, are you going to speak to that?
I can get it in Zach's ear.
Okay, I saw.
I think we issued the 20, the updated version, and the changes in the Uniform Public Defense Code are amended disorderly conduct, lawful possession marijuana and tetra, hydra.
THC.
Okay, THC, okay.
Marijuana.
Marijuana. Possession drug perp, certain drug precursors, and unlawful possession of control, even if it didn't update it by, in last session.
So, are you?
Modified.
Are all of you familiar with the uniform codes? I'm sure you are, Zach.
Somewhat.
Okay, so basically, we have, in our city ordinances, we could have, we could have an ordinance against careless driving. That used to be a state statute, careless driving was a thing, and it would be like a step down from reckless driving. But it was done away with statewide many, many years ago, but some cities continue to have it as a part of a city ordinance. But for the most part, cities adopt those standard ordinances, and then they can supplement them with, you know, any particular, you know, things that make sense in that city but that aren't uniform across the state. Is that, would you agree with that, Zach?
Yeah, so, the example I would give for something.
Talk real loud if you're not going to come up here, okay?
You pointed at me here, you didn't point at me there. So, an example of something that would be specific to us but not for the whole state would be like our noise ordinance.
Yeah.
That would be uniform across the state, but that's something that we have that's different from the Uniform Public Defense.
And that, you didn't, have you got a copy with you there?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, just show it, just hold it up.
It's all the different.
So, the Uniform Public Defense Code typically is going to deal with criminal misdemeanors, and then the standard traffic ordinance is going to be all of your traffic misdemeanors as well as traffic offenses, speeding, stop signs, things like that.
And they're updated every year.
Yeah.
So.
This is something that we do every year, we just didn't realize that the new books came out, so we're doing it in October.
And, a lot, depending on the city, the size of the city, how big a budget they have, that sort of thing, when Marion officer goes to a scene, if they end up working a felony, that's going to go to district court, that's at the courthouse, that's a state, state court. If they could do a misdemeanor battery, most of the time here, that also goes to district court, but they could run it through district court if they want, I mean, through municipal court if they wanted to. But for the most part, you're going to have things like the lower, a lot of speeding, or a lot of traffic stuff, maybe some lower level misdemeanors, that sort of thing, in municipal court.
Something like a disorderly conduct or criminal trespass, or, again, like you said, your low level misdemeanors, or things that, like marijuana, that's just going to clog up district court, we would run that through municipal court, and that's what we would use this Uniform Public Defense Code for.
So, Mark, the, on, what we're, it's on here for us to formally adopt that code as of today, correct? Yeah. And, yeah, normally we'd be doing this much, much earlier in the year, but I'm not faulting anybody, we're still playing catch up with a whole heck of a lot of things, so it doesn't really make any difference that we're going to, that will be our code as of this day, it doesn't affect anything. If something happened or a ticket was given before this, well, it would be under the previously adopted code, and they don't change that much on an annual basis.
No, like, like Mark said, there were only four or five in the UPOC and only two or three in the standard traffic that changed from last year to this year.
So, I, and if any council member has a, I mean, concern about adopting it when it's first time on the agenda, as I've said repeatedly, in my mind, the things that we wouldn't want to move ahead on without giving the public an opportunity to comment are substantive things that logically you could expect people to have an issue on. I don't see that there's going to be a lot of pushback or support either way for adapting, adopting a standard traffic ordinance that we've done every year for, I don't know, however long they've had them.
This is the 51st edition, so probably.
Probably 51 years, yeah. So, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt it tonight. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion in second, discussion, questions? Okay, if not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
I vote yes, opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. Okay, public forum, this is for anybody to say anything they want about anything they want from the public. There's only two of you here. Yeah, if you want to say something, come over and have a seat and say something.
I guess we will see a third time's charm on being a county commissioner for District Two. Everything north of Main Street is in my district. If anybody's got some good suggestions to solve all our issues with all our departments that I see a lot of flaws in, I'm welcome to listen. It's nice to meet, face, get a face on your interim director at this point, haven't had reason to stop and visit with him yet, maybe will in some more than the next couple of weeks, discuss some issues and.
I'll, I'll give you a question.
Okay.
It's not a, you know, I don't think it's a, some kind of an ambush question or anything. I think it's relevant to you being here in that role as a candidate for county commission. How would you see your role, Matt, Mike, as a county commissioner in dealing with the various cities of the county? And do, you know, is it your role to promote one city versus another city, or to work for all, I mean, just, what's your thought?
The saddest part at this point is if Gossel, B. Buddy, Burns a couple of years ago was upside down, there's issues here in Marion, how sad that is to have that many city governments and that much turmoil within our county. Do I have all the answers? Absolutely not. I will need everybody's help for suggestion, support, to get my one vote against the other four, doesn't mean anything goes anywhere if I try to push something through strictly on my own. Big issues within our county, we'll need, we need people to come as a group, and that's something I can't usually get, a group to show up for a concern that is worthy of the concern, and one person coming in, say, address that, complain, whatever, isn't much force to get that corrected. So, it's nice to see if we could get 10, 12 people to show up on any given issue, but a lot of them are afraid to say something, be in the limelight, get their name in the paper, and to me, that's sad when it's an issue that we need to address. And even probably within the city, efficiency will be the only thing that saves us at this point, with cost of goods, doing employee wages, even on insurance issues, my foreign bureau premium went up 18% a year ago, they were going to try to raise it 27% this coming year. I have about $250,000 coverage on my house, all my vehicles that we drive on the public roads have liability insurance, not one piece of my equipment, a million dollar machine shed has no coverage, and the difference in the premium alone, from last year's premium with 18%, is going to be another $18,000. And I just don't know when we want to talk about how we afford insurance increases. It's a big issue, more lack of labor force. If you could only get, it would have to come from the national level as well as the state level. Anybody that's even fully disabled, anybody that's taught for 20 or 30 years, got capers, let them go make every dollar they could make and not penalize them one dollar of their retirement, or 401Ks or whatever, and I think on a short term, that would solve some of our immediate labor shortages within our county. But I don't know how you would get that passed through a state or federal where the money goes, or the majority of it is. Taking the city tax off of that little bit wouldn't change nothing, or even the county or at least. But there's thinking outside the box in efficiency, we've got to get better at that, in my opinion, in some way somehow. I guess that's why my issue's going to be our, some of our farm-to-market roads, as we're called, probably in the worst shape they've been in my existence of 66 years on the face of this earth this past summer. Yes, there was very weather challenges, again, there's labor shortages, high equipment costs, everything's against us, and I don't have all the answers, but I'm hoping with some support and some group efforts, we can turn some of these things around, or we're doomed as a counties as far as a higher tax base yet for just basic services. So.
Mike, we, we do limit to five minutes, so you have 30 seconds left if you want to.
Okay. Well, in that case, I'll just, what I said, I'll put Mike on the record, and it was nice to see him weed, weed eating the sign out there on the corner by the highway. I don't know how many other mayors would have went to that trouble, but like I said, that was a tough, anything weeds tried to weed eat.
How much did I tell you I'd pay you to say that?
Well, I don't know if you live north of the highway and can vote for me or not.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your time, and let me have the time. I hope I didn't mumble too much.
Nope, you did not. Anyone else? Okay, with that then, let's go to department reports and staff reports. Mark?
Not today.
I think, I had something I was going to ask you about, Mark. Oh, the, the, we're talking about hiring a full-time city administrator, and talking about, you sent out some information a while back about the League of Municipalities and their, I don't like the term headhunter, but I don't, I don't know what they're.
They provide that service for the league, yeah.
I met with Mark today for a while, and we called the gentleman who does that, I think he, he's not the only person maybe, but he runs it for the League of Municipalities.
I think he handles most of them.
And he's not the person who did it before here. And, well, I've talked to him twice, and I've been very impressed, and today, we talked about inviting him to be here at the next meeting, just to introduce himself to the council and answer any questions that anyone might have. Is there anyone who doesn't want to do that?
Good to meet.
That would be great.
I did promise him we'd put him on the, for, when I say first on the agenda, I don't mean before the flag salute, but that he will be, when we get through the routine approvals, that he'll probably be the first thing we'll go to then.
Will he also be an asset to help determine salary, what would, it'll take to?
Yes.
Get someone, what ranger and all that?
I would expect.
Would they be the one to kind of help make that decision of what it's even going to take?
Yeah, he'll help. I expect that he'd probably done seven to 10 cities. He retired five, six years ago, and so he's been doing that since.
Matter of fact, we talked about that a little bit today, and, you know, he can't, and he won't tell us what to charge, but he can talk with us about what is likely to get us, you know, what we tell him we're looking for, that sort of thing. He's got, again, that's an ecclesia, but he's got his finger on the pulse of that, far better than any of us do, I'm sure.
Where does he come from?
Hedgeson.
Hedgeson.
Topeka, Hedgeson area, I mean, he did the Topeka part-time, hutch part-time.
The Topeka, Hedgeson.
Yeah, that makes.
Big circle.
That's a big circle.
He likes to drive.
He must be like you. Okay, well then, do please, Janet, just put him on the agenda. Janet, do you have anything you want to bring up?
No.
Okay. Zachariah.
So, last week I told you that we hired an officer, was starting on the 20th, like there, something like that. This is him.
Hello.
I don't remember his ex-star date, but this is Kalen Miles, he's been in law enforcement for 10 years, well.
With corrections.
Yeah.
Coming up on 12 years.
Yeah, worked for the county for six years on the road, and made this wage and came over here.
Welcome aboard.
Good to have you.
So, is the whole department sitting there right now, or am I forgetting something?
Dustin Woodford is not here.
Okay, that's right, okay. So, we are, we're four persons strong.
Yeah, and then last week, Aaron went to Salina to recertify Canine Blue, which she passed with line colors.
I did, okay, you can re-certify them, I don't?
You do that, you do it every year.
Oh, okay, it's an ongoing.
Annual recertification, yeah.
Okay.
And so she is still certified on, she got certified another year, but she's certified on all six drug others, and then evidence recovery and obedience. Every year, about, first of October, and it's between Kansas and Iowa guys, so one year it'll be in Iowa, next year it'll be in Kansas, so next year it'll be back in Iowa. It's through the American Police Hall Association. There's about 40, 40 teams in that organization that we certify with each year.
So, every other year, we fund you an all-expense trip to beautiful Iowa?
To beautiful Des Moines, Iowa, yes. At least it's in Ankeny, so it's a little nicer for her to go in.
Okay.
Yes.
How long has she been certified now?
This is her fifth certification, so I got her in November of 19, and so I just, and to get her, I went to Omaha, and that was my first year's certification, so this is her certification through the Heart of America Police Hall.
That's awesome.
Okay, thank you, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Margot.
Got through September, on the October and November event, and things going on, so.
James is just on the edge of his seat, he desperately wants to, you've got to have him up to the table here, James.
Way to be, James.
I warmed it up for you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council members.
Good evening.
It's been a while since I given a department head report, so I asked Mark if I could give a department head report tonight, and he gave the okay on that. Obviously, fifth was the last department head report that I gave, so this is about a two-month report here. I, you know, I was, when I was doing this here, I was surprised, I only had three complaints. Usually I have a lot more complaints than that, and I was amazed, but I did have 95 inspections in that time. 39 grass inspections, 16 grass violations were written, and we issued 12 cut orders for that time period. I wrote eight city code violations, six for yard and automobiles, one for yard, and one for no occupancy for sewer issues. Currently, we have two city code violations being prosecuted in municipal court. Building permits, we issued 18 permits with 36 inspections. The school concession stand locker room project, I issued a certificate of occupancy for that, that was an awesome project, and I was, I was happy to be involved with that project there. It's definitely going to meet some needs here in the community. The North Cobal Lang Real Estate, the four housing project, so 416 North Cobal and 418 North Cobal, the last two houses, rough inspect, rough end inspections are being performed at this time. They have not all passed their rough end inspections yet, but we're getting close to that. And then they'll start doing the finishing up on it. 412 and 414 are the two on the end, and they've done the foundation and wall inspections on that, and today I just did the underground plumbing on that, we did the air test on the underground plumbing on that, so. East Forest Street duplex project, there are two duplexes that have been completed in the last two months, they finished up the first two up, I issued a certificate of occupancy, and I believe there, he has rented all four of them out, so I thought that was awesome, he was waiting for his certificate of occupancy, so he could start moving people in. Mr. Pyle has started on two more duplexes, and foundations and the under-concrete inspection has been performed on those also.
Can I interrupt you? Because I had a question.
That's the end, so go ahead.
Oh, that's the end?
That's the end.
I, I thought you said at the end. I go, oh, yeah. Do you, did he indicate to you, or do you have any sense of time at all, or idea of when those two will be ready for occupancy, the, the new ones?
Probably mid-winter.
Can, before the first of the year?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay.
Right around that area, I, I believe. He, his timeframe on these, he's moving very, very quickly, but they are the same as everyone that he's built before this here, you know, his foreplanned, everything, everything he puts in there, it's all identical, so it's easy for him on maintenance and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. Mark and I drove by there today, and I, the last time I had been by, I think I expressed some concerns over the, well, that's the way everything looked, but they've got parking pads, poured concrete, now it's gravel up to the concrete, but they, when you get there, you'll be parking on a concrete spot, and all the grass was knocked down, everything looked fine.
Yeah, but it looked pretty rough before that.
It did, yeah.
There's no doubt about that.
Well, any questions for James?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
Let's go then to council members. Amy, do you want to start, anything you have?
I do not have anything.
Zach?
I noticed that the, before, maybe it was Art in the Park, or at least it was definitely before Old Settlers, I noticed that the guys had been downtown and restriped all the parking spots down there and crosswalks and stuff, thought that looked really nice, and I thought, just in general, that Old Settlers Weekend, thought the town showed well for people that were, you know, coming in from out of town, with the new facility that James was talking about up in the hill with the, with the football stadium, and just thought it was a good weekend all around.
How about how well-trimmed that sign was?
That, yeah, that, that was the next one that I was going to hit on my list.
Sloppiest job ever.
Tim?
Yeah, I'll speak first on, with the water department. I went out and met with Jason Wheeler, just kind of getting an update on where things are at, on projects out there, and so they're currently in the process of renovating the new, or resurfacing the inside and the outside of the larger water tower out by the football stadium. So that's a 500,000 gallon tower, and we have two towers, the other one's down at the park, and I believe it's like a 90,000, so quite a bit smaller. So essentially, when they're doing this, they have to drain it, the big one, and the whole town's just running off the smaller one, so it puts a little stress on the department trying to determine if the system's all first set to maintain everything through that one service and make sure they don't overload it or put any challenges on it. One of the things I also had gotten here recently was updating some hydrant and some valves out at the big water tower, because the other ones were so old and they hadn't been turned for so many years that they didn't know if they closed it, if they'd ever be able to open them back up, in which case, then that tower would have been out of service for a long time. So, they got that all updated before this process started, and just kind of had their ducks in order, so hopefully this, the water tower renovation will go smoothly and get us all back online with additional sources of water.
But before you go on, we, Mark and I also went to the, out to the water tower today, and you ever tell me about the extra hole they had to cut in it?
Oh, I think that, I think Tim told me, there's another hole on the east side, I think that's more ocean requirements, I believe, but that one was built 30 years ago, I don't think that was required.
So, that hole is, I mean, obviously there's.
It's another access hole.
Yeah, it gets closed.
Yeah.
But, so if something happens while somebody's in there working, it's another place to get him out?
That's my speculation, yes.
All right. So if somebody says we got a hole in the water tower?
That's all right, that's true. I think they're, they'll put something back on it, they were saying like the interior today, but they're moving quickly.
Sorry.
Nope, that's it. Also, the, with the way that the valves and the, the system's set up out there, that's also location from that point, is where it's, water's also sent out to the, to the county lake house, so it just adds some additional abilities that they have, moving water and making things operate properly out there. The second thing I was just going to mention about was, our budget meeting there, it was brought up about how the city invests its money and everything, and I was going to touch base again on people understanding kind of what, how the city's money is invested, with Central National Bank, and what. what we have is called a NOW account, it's standard for municipalities, it's an interest-bearing savings account, and it's an interest-bearing savings account that pays a percentage of the, whatever the ninety-one-day treasury bill is. So, if it's at five percent, we get a certain percentage of that, and that's calculated daily, and it's paid monthly.
Checking account, I'm gonna say.
I'm sorry, I said that improperly, you're sorry. Checking account, cause we can write checks out of it. So, interest-bearing checking account. So, just to clarify, so people had some questions about that, and so I just wanted to, to know what that was, where that's at. And it's very common, and that's in our bylaws, is one of the types of accounts that our city should do, if we can, and to have it locally in a local bank, which is where the money currently is, versus some other options that we probably could make a little more interest, but it would be taking that amount of money out of the community. So, that's just an update on that.
Thank you. Any questions of, I don't really have anything big, couple of things to mention. And I, last meeting, well, actually, it wasn't last meeting, but I, I sent a memo out to some of the department heads, that I really think that when members of the public come in and bring up issues, or specifically if they ask questions, that we need to try to, in a timely fashion, make a response of some sort to that question. I, I mean, I'm not gonna be able to make a response that night most of the time, but we ought to be able to come up with some idea of information. So, one was, Mr. Markley asked about the Arts and Crafts Fair, and would we find out whether sales tax was paid, and how much, and so on. So, I talked to Janet about that, and we will. We don't know yet, because the state had, Department of Revenue hadn't released the information, but we should know by the end of this month. And I asked Janet, let me know when we found out. I, I mean, I think the, I took the intent behind the question to be simply to, you know, they ought to be paying sales tax, are they? I don't think he was wanting to know how much or whatever, but, so we'll get that information, we'll have it. I got a call from someone who was concerned about washing out around the north side of the tube that goes under Main Street on Luda Creek, or Mud Creek, depending on whether you wanna be fancy or not. Said that, this person said they felt like it was kinda washing out, and also complained about lack of any kinda trimming or mowing on either the north or the south side. That, the comment was, people used to go there, kids would go there and face stuff like that, but they're not doing it now. Now, part of the reason they may not be doing it now is cause there's not much flow of water through there, which, Mark, I haven't, I meant to ask you today, have you heard anything from that group that was gonna come?
I have not, but I'll find out.
Okay, yeah, to dredge out or clean out that at the, out north, and maybe get that going. But anyway, so Janet, if you wouldn't mind, that just be something to pass on to, to Tim, that, I'm not saying that this person was right or wrong, but that was their concern, and so, have him check into it.
Okay.
That's it. So, if no one else has anything, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn this meeting.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Aye, it's having a unanimous. Thank you, our next meeting will be October twenty-first.
Are we having a work-study meeting this month?
Work-study?
Work-study, whatever.
Yeah, I just, I don't know, work-study sounds to me like a college thing or something.
Maybe that's what's coming down.
A work slash study meeting, yeah, I think we do, I have to pull my file here.
We have an office.
We are now in the five-minute press section of the meeting, by the way.
Well, Tim, I did put in a part of where your wife thinks I'm massively insane to do this.
I don't have one on my calendar, if that ain't a main weight. If you did, then that would legally allow everyone else to talk about it.
Must've pulled my list out of here.
Did somebody sign my sheet, cause I didn't get them back?
No, they're stuck at Mike.
They're stuck at Mike.
The next one I show is November.
Yeah, I think we have one.
I didn't have anything on the calendar.
November twenty-fifth.
November twenty-fifth.
Was never presented to me.
I just did.
Well, I thought, I heard you bad-mouthed me.
No, I'm bad-mouthing these.
No, I'm bad, I'm bad-mouthed.
He bad-mouthed you, and I agreed.
Well, that's my point.
They stalled right here.
That's because I'm a busy man.
I know, I'm sorry. Did you get them, Tim?
Mine gave me up.
Not my job to give them to Janet.
Yes, it is.
Tim, your response is, no, they were stuck at Mike.
No, I think we're good.
Well, purse is still there.